Public comment. At this time, the Board welcomes comments and questions from the public, including staff and students. We encourage you to express your opinions on matters concerning any subject relating to public education in general and the operations of the Burlington School District in particular. The Board is very interested in opinions expressed during this public comment period. However, this is not a time to engage members of the Board in conversation or debate. I should do a step back one second to mention that the Board wishes to recognize, welcome, and thank those who are providing language interpretation of the Board proceedings. The Board's commitment that all children receive equitable academic services must ensure that new American parents are welcome and can attend meetings, understand the process, and be actively engaged. Interpretation of proceedings honors, respects, and values the new American parents and students. The Board asks the public and media to respect and understand the importance of this interpretation. So, I have just two people on public comment. Brian Williams, right? And I believe it's Carrie Anderson. I can't read that.
Bude.
Bude, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I speak on behalf of the administrators of the Burlington School District. We, the administrators of the Burlington School District, have grown under the leadership of Jean Collins for the last nine years. We realize that there has been a range of public comments calling for change of district leadership. While we don't agree with that point of view, we recognize that the decision is not ours to make. We do ask that the Board acknowledge the work that we have done as a team under Jean Collins' leadership. All the principals, central office administrators, and the Director of the Partnership for Change petition the Board of School Commissioners of the Burlington School District to honor our superintendent's contract. We believe that it would be best for Jeanie to fulfill her contracting during these difficult times and at this time of year. We do not believe that having an interim superintendent will be an effective step to continue our implementation of the strategic plan, nor would it be in the best interest of our students, staff, or administration. It is essential that the School Board support the superintendent and the central office administration to create the best possible conditions to continue our progress with the school strategic plan, our magnet schools development, and the Partnership for Change. Our equity and diversity work in the Partnership for Change are at critical junctures that demand a continuity of commitment by the Board, superintendent, and all administrators to better meet the needs of each child. Given that all members of the current Board will be up for reelection, and that the district is redistricting, cutting two Board positions, and that there's been so much Board member turnover, losing Superintendent Collins during these turbulent times jeopardizes all of the great work that is accomplished every day in our Burlington Schools. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Brian. Carrie Bude?
Since there's only two of us speaking tonight, I assume there is not a three-minute limit. So, at first, I would like to mention the fact that Bob Abbey, the president of the BEA, cannot be here tonight. He actually volunteered to be a coach of his son's baseball team. Okay? So, that's where he's at tonight, and he's asked me to speak in his behalf if the occasion arose. And guess what? The occasion has arose. We are facing a crisis in this community. I don't think you fully understand that. You might be thinking, okay, the budget went down. You happen to be looking at someone who has taught for 44 years in the Burlington School System. I have seen crises, but I have never seen one like this. It has been brewing for about two years. As a former president of the BEA, I have spoke before many School Boards. We haven't always agreed, but one thing that was always in place was respect. When people came to this microphone and spoke, they spoke with respect. They may have a different opinion. They may have a different view, but they did it with respect. Over the last few years, that has crumbled. Our community is in crisis, and I don't think you fully understand what that means. I came here tonight with a prepared speech. You probably noticed I haven't opened it up because I decided tonight to speak from my Jeanie Collins is our superintendent. She understands our school community. She has been through many crises, and she can rise to the occasion of this one, just like every single teacher and principal and staff in this room, and I include you also. This is a time to pull together, not to break apart. This is a time to trust each other, to respect each other, and to accept full responsibility. The youth learn from us. They emulate what we do. So, I really ask you to stop and really think. We have a great educational community. We have great students, teachers, and administrators, and a Board. So, I ask you to return to something that is very common in my career in the Burlington Schools, and that is respect. We have a responsibility to make sure that what we do, every single action, is one that we would like the youth of this community to follow. I know that public form is not a conversation, but I do believe in the art of conversation. And that means listening to each other, learning from each other, building on each To pull away is not to build. So, at this particular time, and I've done this on several occasions before the Board, I would like to say that we are all the heart of education in this community. So, what I would like to do is give Jeanie the heart of education.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in public comment? That's all we have for this. Yeah?
I've spoken in front of you before a couple of times. My name is Dan Feeny. I'm the Booster Club President at Burlington High School. I've had three daughters. One is graduated last year. I have a junior now, and I have a freshman now at BHS. I find the Board of Commissioners to be in a very delicate situation. I do believe that we find ourselves in crisis now, and I encourage you, nobody likes to make difficult decisions, but unfortunately, you have to make a difficult decision. I think the Burlington School District has some exceptional teachers. I think they have some exceptional students. I think we have some exceptional parents. We find ourselves in the position within Burlington right now because it has not been articulated to us in a consistent manner why the cost of education to our taxpayers is so high. I'm not making a judgment on whether or not it's being invested properly or not. I'm just telling you on a dollar basis, it hasn't been articulated. I called for Jeanie's resignation. I still call for Jeanie's resignation. We need leadership in this community at this time. I think that public discord, respectful discord, is okay. People disagree. But for the better of this community, we need to have somebody on the leadership that can articulate why we should pass the budget, where it's going to go, and what's going to happen over the next couple of years. And I don't think Jeanie is that person. I thank you for serving.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone further for a public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on with the agenda. So, a quick Board report, a few things of note. Next meeting is June 10th. Meeting location is, we're going to be at the Edmonds Middle Cafeteria, it appears. This room, lots of graduation ceremonies going on throughout the school and the district that day, so we're going to be over at the Edmonds Cafeteria, just as a note. Wanted to draw people's attention, for those who haven't seen it, Vermont Digger website, John, I think it's Kilaki, I'm not sure if that's how he pronounces his last name, has written a really, to me, a very touching piece in plain sight, and I just wanted to draw attention to some of the really good things that the school district does. John is the Executive Director of the Flynn Center, and this is a commentary they did after going, asking to be a judge at the Burlington High Talent Show. And he talked, he talked about the affinity he felt for the students, and the strength, the message for the students at this talent show. And I just want to read a short for it, part for it. And he said, he was talking about how the gay, lesbian, transgendered population was comfortably and positively out at the talent show. That was one thing, but what he was really touched, he said, "In particular, I'm deeply touched as gay, lesbian, and transgender kids perform on stage with their classmates cheering them on." And there's been a lot of discussion about equity and inclusion and diversity. And reading through this article, I encourage everyone to go to the Vermont Digger site and take a look at it, just talking about the inclusive community that is being worked very hard to create at the high school. So, take a look at that if you have a chance. At our last special Board meeting, I don't know on the date, there was a motion that was approved by the full Board to enter into discussions with the city about trying to put together some sort of working arrangement in terms of the, in terms of bringing the city, some of the city expertise into the finances here of the district and helping them to work with us in setting up better controls and moving forward. We don't have a, there's no agreement that's been reached with the city at this point. Those discussions still are continuing, and the exact form of what they might take is, at this point, is unsure. And we had it on here as a placeholder, but just want to let people know that there have been a couple discussions by myself and David had been at both of them. Stephanie Seguinio was at one, Liz Curry was at the other, talking with the mayor and his staff about the shape of those. And those are, it's still developing, and whether or not we reach something that suits all sides or not, we don't know, but we're exploring our options in order to make sure that we have the strong controls that we want for our finances. With that, I'll turn over to the Superintendent's report, although the first thing on the superi-- I'm sorry. Yes, Liz?
I just wanted to, I think in the past, Board reflections have been open to the floor.
I'm sorry. I skipped right over the reflection.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I understand we are in a really difficult situation. We are in a very difficult environment, and I want to express my appreciation for the administration and the work you're all doing, operating in an environment of uncertainty. And we are thrown together because of what happened on March 4th, for better or worse. And I think that the Board, this Board, has clearly pledged its time and commitment to keep the kids in the forefront of our minds when we work through this. So, I just want to personally say thank you. You probably, I'm sure you don't hear it enough from the community, and it means a lot to us that you show up for work every day and do the work that you do in this difficult environment.
Liz?
Yeah, I just had actually a question related to the city discussions, because we also have the other initiative, which I think basically had a meeting postponed on Wednesday night. A number of people couldn't make it from the city, Board members couldn't make it. Was there any further discussion of that? Is there any overlap from the city with that group? Because I think there's a number of city council members as well as the staff on that, and I didn't know if anything had been further about that.
Anything that were informally causing, calling the Cost Cutting Committee?
Yeah.
That has, we didn't, that didn't come up in discussion at this point at all. I think those are two parallel discussions that are going on?
Yeah, okay.
Was there anyone else who, I'm sorry, Liz, thanks for bringing that up, that wanted to make a reflection on public comment? Make sure comments. Superintendent's report, although the first thing on that is an update on the Partnership for Change for Brian.
Okay. So, I've chosen to be the Board representative to the Partnership for Change, and I'm really excited about it. I've been learning over the last few weeks a lot about the work, that's the great work that's being done. And so, I just have a brief update for you today, since I am new. I've been meeting with Hal Colston once a week, and I'm going to continue doing that for the duration of my term. There might be a few weeks we skip, but I'm planning on meeting with him weekly. And the reason I'm doing this is because I think I can do more if I stay more connected. I'm going to be also attending some of the other community events that go on. A second thing I'd like to share is just finding more ways for the Board to be involved. What I understand, the Board has been involved. Some Board members have hosted discussions and have been involved in the work all along, but something I'd like to do is just look for additional ways for us to be supportive of the efforts of the Partnership for Change. And then, the third thing I'd just like to share with people is that, in talking with Hal, we have this idea that at the Board meeting each month, instead of me giving an update, we're going to have someone who's doing the work, whether it be a staff person, a community member, somebody involved in the partnership, a teacher perhaps, students, people just sharing some of the progress that's happening on the ground level so that we can see, hear some of the great examples of the work being done. And I've heard some really good things so far. So, I'm really excited to be in this role, and that's all I wanted to say today, just to, you know, let people know that there are some good things to come from in these Partnership for Change updates from the people doing the work.
Thanks, Brian, and thanks for taking the commitment really seriously for that. Jeanie?
The Board has been asking about the climate survey and the equity inclusion report. The equity inclusion report draft, 98 percent, complete draft, was sent to the Diversity Equity Committee, I think on the 10th, for a discussion next week. And once that committee has an opportunity to discuss it, it will be released publicly from there. The climate survey, the much awaited climate survey, has, is scheduled to open up on this Thursday, the 15th. We will be, we have plans to, it's being sent to parents. We have our liaisons lined up to help parents and other, and our outreach folks to help parents who might not have access to a computer. It is an online survey. It will be given to all students, 5th through 12th grade, and all teachers throughout the district. I anticipate that the survey results will be in at some point in June, after they're collated and brought back, and brought back to you. It's very exciting. This is the first survey that we've been able to do since we began our work on diversity and equity, and this is intended to become an annual survey, so again, we could start to chart the progress that we're making for our students and what students are actually seeing for our teachers and adults in the community as well. Questions on the report or the survey? Okay. Kindergarten enrollment, we are still slightly low. No, we're actually low. As of May 10th, we have 272 enrolled in kindergarten, which is approximately 15 lower than this time last year. We're watching that closely. At the moment, all of our kindergarten class sizes are slated to go to between 19 and 20 next year, which is a good class size. We've been much higher than that in recent years. So, we're watching that very closely and still doing an outreach to the community. So, if anybody is watching this at the moment, and you have a child turning five by September 1st, please give us a call. There has been a change in the school bus route that began this week on Monday. A letter did go home to parents. This change in the neighborhood specials came from CCTA as a result of their difficulty finding drivers. They didn't have enough drivers to run the routes, and so they re-looked at where the routes are and combined a couple of routes, still picking up all the kids, still reaching all the areas, but needing to go to two fewer routes. The letter is on the Burlington School District webpage, and again, has gone out to all parents last week prior to the change. I haven't yet heard, I have a roomful of principals here, but I haven't yet heard directly from parents myself about any concerns around this. Principals may have, may have heard. Any questions on that?
Can I ask a question on kindergarten enrollment? It may not be data. I'm sure it's not data that you have at your fingertips, but I don't know if it's even data that's collected. Do we have numbers for, like preschool enrollees who live in Burlington for 12, 13 versus preschool enrollees who live in Burlington at 13, 14?
Yes, we do, right, Diana? Yes, we do. And when we're, when we're doing our reach out for kindergarten, we're looking at the Burlington residents who are enrolled in preschools. We talk to doctors' offices. We look at birth rates. Where it's difficult for us sometimes, though, is that a number of kids, both through the new American community, but also a large number of entrepreneurial, young families moving into the district with first-time children moving in that we don't always catch. And so, you know, it's easy to do an outreach for the families we know of. It's easy to do an outreach for families with siblings, but the new families, it's hard to catch.
Do we know, though, if there is a dip in preschool enrollees this year? Like this year's four-year-olds in preschool, was that less than last year's four-year-olds?
My early childhood education director is shaking her head no. Does that mean no, there's not a dip, or no, you don't know?
I know a total number that we've had in our crystal is the same, but I-
But how it splits out, third to fourth, is unknown at this time. We can find that out if you'd like us to-
I'm just curious if it's a population trend or if it's just a location?
I do know that we've reached out to everyone that's in our partnership programs to ensure that they were either enrolled in our kindergarten, or if they weren't, the reasons why they might not be. So, you have a range of reasons. Some people keeping their children back a year, some seeking private schools, but we did reach out to everyone that we know about to make sure we had their registration.
All right, thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. If we can get a motion to approve the consent agenda. Scott, move to approve. Do we have a second? Alan? Scott?
I'd like to move to, move to remove an individual from the consent agenda. Nick Molender.
So, I guess we need a second to remove an item from the consent agenda.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Curry. And I guess you're just gonna straight vote on that. All in favor of removing one? I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question about consent agenda already? So, Jeanie, could you talk for the RIF recalls here?
Although we're talking about removing an item from the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll wait.
Yeah. It's automatic to vote. No, I don't, I think we don't need a vote. You're right. Thank you.
If I may, however, if you're removing Nick Molender, you, from the consent agenda, you also need to remove Francesca Valela because she would be the recall if Nick were approved, and so I don't want that to accidentally go through as you're discussing the assistant principal position.
Okay.
I'll accept that as an additional part of the motion.
Okay, so you're moving to remove the item for Nick Molender and Francesca Valela from the consent agenda. All right. Any other, before we vote on consent agenda, any other issues on that? Yeah?
So, should, if I have a question about the RIF recalls, should I ask to have them all removed so I can ask my question?
No, you can just ask.
Can I just ask it now, so we don't have to vote right away? Okay. So, can you just explain, just so that everyone here and I am clear, that the RIF recalls on this, this list are those that you discussed before, that there are still people on the list that are not slated for cuts, that are not being RIF recalled? And they would be all the people that were the option, your old option three?
Yeah.
And also, those that are non-mandated?
Right. So- So, the teachers that are on the RIF recall here are because of resignations. You see a large number of resignations, starting with Erin DeFauld, and then there's also a large number of, for retirees as well. So, the first thing we have to do is if, if a position was already in the budget, so these positions were not cut, potentially cut, including in the default budget, which hasn't been determined, if they have not been affected yet, then we must recall people who are appropriately licensed into those positions. So, these RIF recalls do not at all affect the choices that you have yet to make.
Okay. That's why I want to clarify. So, for example, the RIF, can you give me an example of someone who's being RIF recalled to fill another position? I saw you did that with Francesca, but, but give me another example, if you don't mind, just so I fully understand.
Yes. Ashley Howard was actually bumped and recalled to Mercedes Luna's position.
Okay.
Graham Lambert, Graham Lambert is one, is a separate one.
Would you take a minute and just go through those six or eight RIF recalls and just describe why? That would be very helpful for me to feel confident going forward.
RIF recall.
Starting at Michael.
Michael.
Kirsten Meyer.
Kirsten Meyer. So, he had been bumped, and so he is being recalled to Tashika Solomon's position at Flynn. She has resigned.
Okay.
So, you may not see her resignation up there. Would you see Mercedes up there? Okay. So, you should, I mean, it's possible somebody resigned last time, but mostly you should be able to make the connection. Ashley Howard, replacing Luna.
Graham is different, I understand.
Graham's different. Erica Lowe was displaced. She bumped, so that, so she's displaced point six, and she's bumping to elementary. So, she's the one who displaced Michael Kirsten Meyer.
Okay.
Jennifer Nessin was displaced by Flanagan and is recalled to Lowe's position up above. The next one, Andreas Nolte, is recalled due to a resignation, Brian Schwartz's resignation. Now, there is a business position that is on the cut list.
Yes.
But a second business teacher resigned.
Ah, okay.
So, this, this referee, so Nolte was actually the one cut because of the cut business position. But Schwartz resigned, and so therefore, we have an opening and still have a cut position.
Okay.
Francesca, we already spoke about, I'm sorry, Chase Rosenberg was one of the Spanish teachers, and we had a resignation, Don Fox, at the middle school, so he's RIF recalled to an open position.
Because he would have had that certification.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
It goes by certification, not just the position you're in.
Yeah.
Do you think I covered it?
Yeah, so I just, I know, for me, this is interesting because what this is saying is of the number of teaching positions that we had to cut in the first, to reach our proposed budget, we've RIF recalled quite a few of them through this process. I mean, what's the net number of teachers now?
I don't-
I think there were about-
Well, actually, I did share it with you recently. Isn't it around eight or-
It was around eight, and you've RIF recalled.
But I don't know, there's a number of, there's eight positions still left to be determined.
determined, but what I don't have in front of me is the number of already RIF teachers who either resigned or are still waiting a RIF recall, because there's still some that are awaiting a RIF call.
Right, but this creates a difference in the number of teachers who were-
Who are waiting up there.
Yeah. Okay, all right, just wanted to clarify that. Okay, anyone else have any questions, any clarity on that? Nope, okay, I'm good.
Anything else on the consent agenda? All in favor of the amended consent agenda? You say that?
Aye.
All opposed? So, I'm not exactly sure how we need to move, did you want to speak to?
If you'd like to speak to a particular person, then that would be executive session. If you'd like to speak to the process of hiring, then we'd be happy to answer that in open session.
That's what I was gonna, executive session.
I'd like to take it up in executive session. Do we do it, do I make a motion to move now, or do we do it at the end of the meeting? Apologize for not-
We should make it at the end of the meeting, the executive session.
Okay.
We already have a scheduled one. Liz, you second it? Did you want to, are you comfortable with that?
That's fine. Just a process question, so the other person that we removed, we would also talk about that person in executive session?
Correct, we couldn't act on that person until the first person's acted upon.
Okay.
All right, now we're into committee reports. Commissioner Pillsbury.
Okay, the Infrastructure and Technology Committee, to summarize from our minutes that we will be, the RFP for Hunt Group has been set out, and we've been hoping it does in 30 yet. We received correspondence, we received correspondence from the State Department of Environmental Conservation notifying us that there was a measurement of low levels of PCB in four of 20 samples taken at Champlain School. They made three recommendations. One was to examine the lighting fixtures, and they're going to be replaced this summer. To clean the hard surfaces in certain areas, and that was done during the April break. And the third recommendation is to have an information meeting with staff and parents, and that's being scheduled now through the Department of Environmental Conservation. The IDC committee has, is working on three goals for the year. Our goals are, let me just get that, are to help preventive maintenance and capital projects, facilities, strategic plan for five to 10 years, making sure that we are fully understanding the funding source and getting this plan into finance, a part of our thinking of a strategic financial plan. We're also talking about, we're also planning to put together a report for the board regarding St. Joseph's. And a third is to list, is to get a list and the assessed value of all the property in our district so that we can start to do a better job of capital planning and also the various ways of funding the capital improvements that need to be done in the school district. Those are major points of our discussion. We'll be meeting again on the first Tuesday in June. We will be doing a field trip to several schools in the morning, as we did in May. Alan?
So Keith, in your, in the agenda, there was the five-year plan, and I assume that's just, you know, the five-year plan, was there any comments, suggestions, thoughts that came out of that?
We're still looking at that, and we also have, we also have sort of a brainstorming kind of list, and we keep looking-
Is that the other document?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I was gonna ask what that was, yeah.
Things might change, things might change, depending on obviously emergencies, or for example, if there's renovation at VHS, obviously, some of those items would come off. So, it's sort of an ongoing list that we're trying to develop so that we are aware of our needs, and the whole district is aware of the facilities and capital improvement needs. I also want to make sure that we're taking care of preventive maintenance, so it doesn't get to the point of being a major facilities improvement needed. So, we're thinking in all of those different categories, preventive maintenance, ongoing maintenance, and a strategic plan for the capital improvement that needs to be done to meet security, safety, code enforcement, and the various upgrades we need to do to our 19 buildings in the district. And we're talking, we're talking about what's a realistic way of making sure that those facilities are renovated, upgraded, in a way that's sustainable for the taxpayers. So, the question comes, do we continue to bond, or do we look at what's the value of our property, and do we take a certain percentage of that as other institutions do with providing capital improvements for their district?
Meredith?
Try again.
Maryam?
Commissioner Stoll.
Thank you.
That's what I'm gonna do now.
I'm sorry.
Call me out every time.
Okay. Keith, just a quick question about the PCBs. I'm not really familiar, can you just give me a rundown about what is the risk of finding that in Champlain School?
Basically, there could be all kinds of sources for that.
Okay.
You know that there is that environmental thing of the old maltex building, whatever you call that, dumped down there. So, you know, it could be environmental in the area, but they were found in the school, and we had, so I would rather have the person from the Department of Environmental Science come to the state to explain it all. And so, we have a meeting with parents, so that everyone knows exactly what we're talking about.
Is there anything written that we could, did they send you a report or something?
We have, I can get you a copy of the report.
All right, I'd appreciate that, thank you.
Paul.
All of the information to the IDC agenda, you can look at it.
Okay.
The matter is on the IDC documents, right? Yes, I was gonna do it.
All right, that's great.
Meredith is at her daughter's band concert, so we don't have a diversity, she's not here, is there someone from diversity and equity that has a report, Liz?
Sure, I can speak to it. It's, there's a lot of detail in the minutes, but basically, the meeting focused on public comment regarding Office of Civil Rights data for the past, to the previous two fiscal years ago. I think that's the most up-to-date. And there were concerns expressed about the disparities in discipline based on race in relation to the percentage of students in the district that are African-American and Asian-American and other races, non-white. We also talked about the technology rollout in the middle schools and what the plans are for bringing the two schools to kind of an equitable use of the laptops, but that's become moot now that the budget impact has essentially halted a lot of that progress. We had a number of administrators who gave up a lot of time to talk with us, and that was very appreciated. Dylan McNamara, Rich Amato, Jeff Tolbrook, Jim Drown were there. So, we talked about positive PBIS in the schools and how the elementary schools have kind of staggered their assessment, they're each doing an assessment with Jim, and he's doing kind of a, trying a train-the-trainer approach, and the schools had different implementation schedules. And in June, we requested that those schedules be brought back to the committee so we could take a look at what the big-picture plan is. So, those were the highlights, and then we had a hiring update, and then EIRC update from, Deverne, hiring update from Nikki, I'm sorry, EIRC report update.
EIRC?
Sorry, Equity Investment, Equity Inclusion Report Card. Shouldn't talk in acronyms.
Kyle, anything to report from the curriculum?
Only since the finalization of the schedule, there hasn't been a meeting. The Curriculum Committee will meet on the fourth Tuesday of each month, which this month will be the 27th, at 5:00 p.m. But, so I'll be reaching out to folks, but in general, in this period of necessarily and appropriately spending a lot of time talking about financial matters and budget, we're just all eager to get to the work of talking about teaching order.
Thanks. Commissioner Stoll, Maryam?
Thank you, Commissioner Halloway. Okay, so finance. We have met, one, two, three, four, six times recently. We're meeting weekly. We will meet again this Wednesday at 7:00, and invite everybody, the public, and also board members to come. So, I'll just quickly recap some of the things we've done. We do have quite extensive minutes, minutes up through, I think, the 16th are listed now, and then I'll be putting the next minutes up this week. So, the first thing we did, as you all know, is that we did settle and create a budget at 67.4 million. So, that is the proposed budget that will be brought to the public on June 3rd. What we discovered this weekend, good news, I think, is that when the state settled on their tax rate and what is called the base education amount, we were finally able to get a hard number for how this will affect taxes, and our new proposed budget will increase taxes by 7.2 percent. That is noticeably below the 9.9 percent of the defeated budget, so the taxes will be less than they would've been. The default budget, if we should end up going to that, also has a tax increase, which we now know would be 5 percent. One additional thing that we learned from the state is the way that they calculate their formula around different things, including the default budget formula includes the base education amount, and since that was changed, that had the result of lowering the default budget by close to almost $400,000. So, now we know that on June 3rd, if our proposed budget does not pass, we will be looking at a default budget that will be 66.3 million. So, it will be just over $1 million less than the fiscal '15 proposed budget. What that means for us as a finance committee is that our task is, and as a board, our task is to determine how we will bring our programs and services down to that level. So, that will be the next task that the finance committee is taking on, and as I said, we're gonna start that on Wednesday. The other thing that we have been doing, finance committee, is working on the second half of the agenda of bringing the financial health of the district back up to an acceptable level, and we've been looking at financial controls that we need to put in. We've been looking at what's there and trying to determine where to go. We've started with some concrete steps. We are in the midst of finalizing a warrant oversight process. Warrants are the payrolls and other types of expenses that come through, and the school board needs to approve them, so we're putting on more stringent procedures there so that we know what we are approving, and we're approving what we should be approving. The district has also set in some administrative oversight, I believe, over any purchase that comes through that's not a seasonally correct purchase is being looked at more closely, which is a good thing. We've also started to put more specific oversight on our fiscal '14 numbers to the year end, and we've been talking with our finance director about how we can get the right information to know exactly where we are. So, we've made some very good progress. I have, we have much, much more to do, and so, as soon as we get the default budget finished, we'll be continuing down that road of continuing to look at the financial controls and how we need to adjust them, change them, or bring in new ones. So, I have, we have two motions tonight, one I'm going to bring up, and the other I think Scott is going to bring up.
Question before you get to that?
Yes, please.
So, from your explanation, am I correct, then, in understanding that with the new numbers from the state, that if the proposed budget doesn't pass, the committee and the board will need to find additional cuts of over $1 million?
That is correct, 1.1 million by my count.
Thank you.
And we had been thinking it was going to be 800,000, so that's a change for us.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions before I get to the motions?
But you also did want to stress that tomorrow night, that is one thing that we're looking at, and you were encouraging board members if they could-
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And I know the administration worked on some proposals for us today, which we're gonna be discussing.
You will not get that much before tomorrow night.
Okay. We had your meeting, right?
Right, the administrators and I met yesterday, we're continuing to bat some ideas back and forth, and-
Okay. So, we will, we're getting information from the administration, I've asked board members to think about things, I know some board members have been looking very closely at the numbers, I have some ideas, and we'll be bringing those together tomorrow.
Yes, Commissioner Stoll, just quickly, as a reminder, what were the amount of cuts that have been made up to this point? So, 1.1 additional, but up to this point, the board has cut?
So, we made 2.5 million in cuts, just about, but we also added in some expenses of about, what did that end up?
1.2.
1.2. And those were things that we needed to cover sequestration costs and so forth, and then we also did add two teaching positions, an ELL and a kindergarten teacher, add it back.
For a net of about 1.3 cut?
Exactly, yep. So, if you think about it, in a sense, we need to find almost that many cuts again. So, it's quite a big task. Yes.
So, we cut, you said we cut 2.5?
Yep.
And then didn't we also, like, incorporate a deficit?
Yes, the deficit is incorporated in those numbers.
So, we cut 2.5, and we took into account a deficit?
Yes.
And we added in some positions?
Yes, we did.
But if this doesn't pass, we're gonna have to cut a million, over a million more?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just reiterating, so it's clear for myself and everyone out there.
Yeah, and in fact, the finance committee's goal is to try and figure out what those cuts will be as soon as possible, because we think that the community needs to know, and there's no reason to delay, so we're gonna be jumping right on top.
And so, I think if I read this correctly, I read somewhere that we're, there are a total of 29 positions that we're losing, 29.5 positions that we're losing in the, in the, but this scenario that goes up for vote in less than a month, with, and we're adding two, so that's a net of 27.5, full-time equivalents, we're losing across the district.
Yes, and they're mostly not teachers, the bulk of them are paraeducators. Yes, that's correct. But I would say with the RIF recalls that we were just talking about, some, that number will go down.
Well, the positions won't go down, just the, we're losing less people-
Yes, we're losing less people, exactly.
But we're still losing the same old positions?
Yes.
We just won't refill some of those positions.
Exactly. You know, and that's a difference, you know, in terms of how it affects people's lives.
Yeah.
Yes.
How many, how many, how many positions might we have lost? Is that, is it, you know what I'm saying, like Henry's pointing out, we lost 27.5, but I mean, how many might we have lost?
We started at 38.
It's hard to say.
We could've lost much more than that, but one of the things that we did make a conscious decision is that we did decide to maintain the teacher positions, so that was a big decision for us. So, in fact, we might have lost less positions had we chosen that.
I see.
But it would've been teacher positions as opposed to paraeducators or other support staff. All right. So, let me go on to the motion that we have tonight. So, this is the hiring oversight motion that I was talking about. Shall I go ahead and just make a motion to that? Okay. So, I'll make the motion, and then Keith, would you speak to it?
Right.
So, the motion is, whereas it is the responsibility of the board to ensure the fiscal health of the district, and whereas the finance committee recognizes that this responsibility requires a clear understanding of the current assets and resources of the district, including employees. The audit shall also include a headcount, as well as actual FTEs by department and school for all employees. It shall include a review and an update if needed of all job descriptions, and make any recommendations deemed necessary to align personnel resources efficiently and equitably in each department or school. The HR office shall report quarterly on the progress of this effort, with a first-person report due at the September 2014 Finance Committee meeting. Additionally, before the creation of any new positions, there must be approval of the position by the board. A second.
Keith?
We all know that a major part of our budget is our personnel costs, and what this is is an effort by the finance committee, and we feel it might be helpful to the district to get an understanding of all of the positions in our district, and whether there's any redundancy, or maybe some job descriptions that need to be cleaned up and changed to the- up and changed to the technology and various ways of doing things. So we thought that this would be one way of us trying to manage the 80 percent of our budget, that it's personnel costs, so we're knowing the positions, making sure we're clear about what the job descriptions are, so that when we have to come to reductions or additions, we are very clear. It's clear to us that we can justify the new position, or we can, or we have some idea of good justification for reducing positions. And so that's why the thinking here was to get some better management control of personnel numbers.
Questions?
Thank you. Any other finance mem, oh, go ahead.
I'm just a little confused that we were starting to have this conversation, but Keith, if you might be able to help, but I'm just not seeing the point, the part of the motion that says an audit, you know, is being created, what audit is that? It tells me what the audit will do.
Maybe it's the word audit.
Okay.
It's the right of the motion. It's just, basically, what's the word? I would just say investigating or checking into what our positions are. That's what it is, making sure we know what the positions, all of the numbers of positions and the job descriptions, if you think, are adequate, accurate to what's actually happening now.
So you could change the word audit to the investigation? Would that clarify it for you?
No, I'm just trying to see the language, that what is the thing that it's actually creating, and it's telling me what it also does. The first mention of audit starts talking about what the audit shall also include. There's no initial mention of the audit before that that says we're creating an audit under the, you know, who's in charge of that. I mean, it gets into that in the language, so functionally it might not work. It just looked like it was missing a sentence, but perhaps not.
I had also wondered about the wording of that when I put it on today. Keith, would you take a?
I have no problem.
A friendly amendment?
It may not have a practical impact, so I'm not worried. I just wondered if a sentence had gotten dropped, but it sounds like, it's just semantics.
This was the entire, this was the discussion the finance committee had. This is what we needed, a headcount and understanding, reporting quarterly.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay.
So I have a question. So is there any effect that this, would this motion have any effect on the hiring for positions that are, that are open?
No, would not.
Because I know that the principals are wanting to move forward as they discover that they have open positions, so they would be able to move forward.
Positions are open, they're already created. These are created.
Right. I just, I just want that for clarification.
So I'm sorry, did you remove the audit language? Or clarify it?
We didn't, we left it the way it was.
Okay. I mean, I agree, Ben's making a point, I just think it needs to be clarified what kind of audit it is, just doesn't refer back to any type of, specific type of audit.
Right, I would agree. Keith, can I make a suggestive change? Could we just say that after the whereas, the finance committee recognizes this responsibility, there's a clear understanding, et cetera, et cetera, of the district, including employees, an investigation shall be instituted that will include, and then it goes on, a headcount as well as blah, blah, blah. So take out the audit shall also and say an investigation shall commence.
An audit is initiated. Shall.
All right. An audit is initiated that shall, is that acceptable? Keith?
Yes.
Okay.
So could you clarify for me what changes are?
The sentence that starts the audit shall also would just change to, you say it.
An audit is initiated that shall, and I think drops also?
Yes. An audit is initiated that shall, take out also.
You got that, Liz?
Can I, I'll just speak to it in favor of it. I think it's a great motion. I think there's two things it does. One, it does give the board oversight over new positions, which is critical in a time where finances are tight. And the other thing it does, it'll give us information that we don't have now. So in order to make responsible decisions about hiring at the board level, we need to understand who we, who we are, who we've already hired and what our needs are to be able to look at that. And this will, this is directing our HR department to embark on this, which is an important process in straightening out what's going on in terms of hiring. So I think it's an excellent motion. It was worked on quite a lot by the finance committee, specifically so that it would address the issue and the concern that Patrick brought up. And I also believe that administration has looked at it and also mentioned that, you know, it feels doable. We're not asking too much.
Ellen?
On that front, the place that I would see that, I would want to know if we have an understanding of what we're looking to do here, so that shall include a review and an update if needed of all job descriptions. I mean, is that something we're, that you're expecting the finance committee to be looking at all, all job descriptions across the district at this point, or, I mean?
I mean.
I mean, that's my question, because that's going to be a book like this.
Right. I think that what we heard from the administration is that we had not updated job descriptions in a very long time, and a lot of our jobs are not actually reflecting the descriptions that the employees do. So there was thought that this was something we needed to do. Now, whether the board needs to look through and read every job description, I don't know, but I think the HR department needs to do that and report to us on their findings. So that was my.
Oh, okay. I mean, that gives me an understanding of what you're expecting here, so like, I wanted to know if I was going to be expected to be reading 400 job descriptions?
I hope not. If that's what this says, we don't want it to say that. So I think we need to be.
That's not the idea.
That was not your idea, right?
T.
Just a reminder that Hal Colston and I both spoke to the board about a visit that we recently made to another Nellie May School District that uses a position analysis to create job descriptions. And through the Resources of Partnership for Change, it is our hope that we're going to be revisiting the job descriptions in the district anyway, in a, an open and inclusive manner that utilizes this position analysis process and keeps the student at the center focus of the work. So that, that is starting to get underway. We've had a couple of phone calls with the person who has designed this. The district we visited is willing to help us with it, and so that, that will be underway, and all job descriptions will be updated through that process.
That's great. So it dovetails well. I guess it's going to keep the school board in a loop through that process.
Absolutely.
Any further comments, questions? Scott?
I just want to follow up on what Commissioner Stoll was saying regarding, you know, taking an additional step, is I've spoken highly about my colleagues here on the board and the work that we're going to do this year, and there is going to be a difference with this year's board. And I think up until this point is, there has been a lot of talk, a lot of energy, and what I like about this motion is, we're starting to see the talk become something more than talk and action, is that it's important in this district that we start looking at every single position that it's being created new. It walks a fine balance between micromanaging and looking at the district as a whole is where we need to be. These are about new positions being created. So we don't get into a position where we're creating something unwieldy. So I'm grateful that this is coming to the board. I hope everyone can support it to show the community that we are taking a different stance. We are putting in the controls that we keep talking about to the community.
Seeing no further questions or comment, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Scott, you have a motion you'd like to make?
I'd like to, I'd like to move that the school board vests the decision-making authority for a default school budget to the finance committee, so the voters of Burlington can fully understand the option of voting no to the proposed school budget of 66.4 million dollars. And it's in everybody's inbox right now.
Liz, I just sent it to you.
I think it should be 67.4?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. The default. Yes, 67, thank you. 67.4.
Do we have a second? Keith? Would you like to speak to it, Scott?
I would.
No, wait a second. Created budget was 67.4, right?
Yeah, but it says no to voting to the proposed budget.
Proposed.
Oh, if you vote that, yes, okay, I got you.
Sorry, thank you. 67. To speak to it is, I know Stephanie, who couldn't be here. This was something is that I know Stephanie felt strongly about, among other members of the board, is that we had said to the community that when the voting was going to start, and right now you, you can call City Hall and you can request an absentee ballot. They can't send it to you yet, but you can be put on the list. So the ballots are going to be going out very soon, and so when people are voting on this, right now is, they don't know, when they vote no, what does a no mean? What does it mean in terms of athletics? What does it mean in terms of foreign language? What does it mean in terms of central administration? And so what we had talked about as a board before is, we need to put those options out there, so when folks vote, they know what the alternative is to voting yes. And the concern is just that with our next regularly scheduled meeting taking place in June, if the finance committee meets on Wednesday and possibly Thursday, or whatever the schedule is, when we come to an agreement on those additional 1.1 million dollar cuts, is, and Miriam has certainly asked for everyone to be there, so it would not necessarily be a finance committee-driven decision. It would actually be, you know, the hope is that it would be a board-driven decision. The thinking is, to save time, if the board accepts what our recommendations are, we will accept that as the default budget. And so I, I know Stephanie felt strongly about it, and I'd like to just have a debate about it tonight among the board members and how they feel in the interest of saving time.
Keith?
The reason that I'm seconding this is because I think that we work, we work hard on Wednesday night, and if we don't get a default budget number then, but we convene on Thursday night, I think that we probably can get it done this week. Voting starts on Thursday, as Scott said. I think the people who are out there advocating for our budget want this information as they go around to the NPAs. And I think that if we wait even till next week to have a special board meeting, it would, I think it would be advantageous to not only our supporters, our administration, so that they can make some, start to make some decisions. And why wait, why not, you know, why not wait till next week? But I think that if we can do it this week, and if all board members are, as you've been coming to our finance meeting when we made these kind of decisions, I think that probably Wednesday or Thursday night, we can get a default budget, and then we'll have something that the press, the supporters, the administration will know, and therefore we can start to work on advocating for a proposed budget that we're asking for people to support in June.
Great.
The clock is ticking. I see no downside to this at all.
Ellen?
I think in the past, we've had other times where we've done similar, where we have delegated to specific committees some important decisions when we've had timing situations like this. I see this as, you know, nothing that doesn't have precedent within the board. I also think that, you know, we on the finance committee have an obligation to get out to the rest of the board and get their opinions as well if, if this motion passes, which I would support.
Mary?
I cannot speak strongly enough against this motion. I think this motion goes against everything that the board has been working on since we stepped up to the plate to look seriously at this budget. If we accept this, we are saying that a small subset of this board, five of us, will be responsible for, single-handedly, finding 1.1 million dollars in cuts at our next meeting or two in eight hours. We are asking that before we've even seen any numbers from the administration about their suggestions. We are asking that before we've had a chance to sit down and really look seriously at what's left in our budget that we can work with. I completely understand the need to move forward with this quickly, and I do feel badly that potentially someone doing an absentee ballot, some few people may find that they are not 100% sure of what they're voting for, if they vote no. But I think each of us is abdicating our responsibility, a huge responsibility that's been entrusted to us by the community if we do this. We're not talking a long time. We're talking perhaps another week. I see nothing wrong with the finance committee working on Wednesday. At the end of Wednesday night, I can pretty much assure you, we're going to have more questions for the administration to answer, as we always do when we come up with ideas as a board. We're going to need to give them a day or two to come back to us with that information, and then we're going to need to analyze the information and think about it and figure out. Think about the process we went through to cut the, the amount of money that we did. It took multiple days. It was very difficult. There were lots of trade-offs. And we don't have the luxury to, to, you know, jump into a process that detailed, but we certainly can do more than spend four or five hours with four or five of our time and come out with such an important thing. If the proposed fiscal '15 budget doesn't pass, what we bring to the board, what, what the default budget is, is not something to play with. It's what we will have. You know, it may be the more likely budget that we're going to work with. So the idea that we would spend less time looking at that than we did to the fiscal '15 budget is, is really, you know, I think would be a sad commentary on our putting forth that we're a new board that's looking at financial information carefully. So I would suggest as, as an opposite proposal, that we have a finance committee meeting on, on Wednesday night, that I warrant another finance committee on Thursday night, that we prepare the administration, that their Thursday might be spent focused entirely on looking for more information for us, and that we warrant a full board, board meeting for the following Monday night, and we present that and we pass it as a board. That would be my alternative. So I, I really hope that people can not, not be fooled by the idea that, that expediency is the most important thing here. The most important thing here is the budget we come out, what we come out with, that's what's most important to our kids. It's most important in terms of sending out the message to the community that, that we've got a different way of looking at the budget, and we're going forward in a way that's going to be sustainable and appropriate.
Charlie, then Brian.
Could you clarify by, when you, when you're inviting the rest of the board to come to the finance meeting tomorrow night? We're talking about tomorrow night. So who's going to be able to vote on what comes out of that committee, please?
Thank you for clarifying. Everybody's invited, but the only votes are the finance committee. So the only people that will be voting will be those of us on the finance committee, which is Scott and me and Keith, and I don't know if Stephanie will be back or not.
She will not.
So Stephanie, so there will be three of us voting, and perhaps Patrick.
Did Alan?
I would be kind of curious to know why I've just been left off the finance committee, Miriam?
I apologize. You're sitting back there, and Alan. So I'm sorry. So there will be four of us. It would be Alan, Scott, yeah, I just said it, and then possibly Patrick. And, and that would be, the entire decision would rest on those people's votes.
Brian?
Yo, can you pass me the mic?
One of the, Brian? This is a mic that actually should work as well.
But this one feels more official. So I'm not trying to pick a fight about this or anything, but I have to agree with Miriam. I think that this is really important decisions, and I think we all bear the responsibility for these cuts, and it's not that I don't trust the finance committee, because everyone's been working really hard. I've been coming to almost every meeting and watching and participating, but I just think when we're, if we're talking about this is where we're going to end up, that that needs to be a discussion that, that is brought to the public through a general board meeting, and as much as, you know, we may not have clarity by the election about what those cuts mean. I mean, we might need to keep talking after the election. I don't know. So I, I think we need, we, I would be hesitant to rush into, into a motion where, where we are making the decision-making process simpler and less participatory. So I agree with Miriam. I'm open to hearing other people's views, but that's where I stand right now. Thanks.
Meredith? Kyle?
I'm going to sound like Emily Litella, because I just showed up. And I haven't been here for the conversation, but I have a gist of what's going on around the default budget. And all I can say is, the most voices you can have, and the most votes you can have on this default budget, really send a message to the community that this has been a process that involves voices from all over the city, and if you leave four people to make this very important decision, you are going to hear from the community. You're not going to have, people are going to be very angry, and I already have been talking to people about that. There are folks who are very concerned about what's going to happen with this default budget. You are going to be taking away the voices of people who want to be able to weigh the default budget versus the budget that we have now. Okay? So we need to get this done quickly, and there need to be other board members involved in thinking this through. And this is a really important decision, and, you know, I would like, I can't wait, you know, for those of you who want to push this through with only four people, or to see what happens when the folks from sports and curriculars show up, because you're going to have to cut from that area. And if you take the voices away from the people, the teachers, people see what the impact on the classroom, you're going to hear from them, and they're going to be very, very angry. And I say that as someone who's leading the board, but just think this through. Don't just let four people make this very important decision. And we need to get this done this week so that people can vote on it, know what they're voting for. You know, I think people at the other end of the spectrum, for me, have talked about how folks are very upset, and they want to be able to vote down the budget. You have people at the other end of the spectrum, and I don't think you realize that. Not everyone has been out yelling at us in the audience all the time. You know, I've been talking to people in the community, they're waiting to see what happens, and I think it's, you know, please don't take their voices away, because you'll hear from them. Thank you.
Kay.
Sure. My reading situation, we're in a fairly untenable position. It's very difficult to balance all these things. I thought Scott made a fine point that was seconded by Keith, that voting is going to begin, and those people aren't going to have information. So the damned if we do, damned if we don't. We're not going to have a perfect process. I just feel that the board has really, in great good faith and earnestness, looked at the numbers. I think people are fairly familiar with what's there. No one, doesn't matter where, you know, Meredith makes some good points, but I don't think it matters where people are on the spectrum. Well, that's not true. But there are going to need to be made cuts to places that none of us would want to make cuts. And there's a big difference between haste, for me, haste and expedience. To say that we move it along to try to get information out to as many voters as possible in an early fashion is not the same as saying let's rush, or be hasty, or vicious, for me. I feel that in lots of deliberations, I'm one who is very hesitant to give up my voice, but I think we've got really broad representation within the finance committee of the sort of perspectives that I've seen on our board. That's something that gives me greater comfort there. And, yeah, I think we're going to be making decisions because we have to make decisions. Every decision we're going to make, someone else, I'm pretty certain, can make a pretty compelling argument that the cut should have been somewhere else. And that's how deep we are in the cuts. It's hard for me to imagine that we'll find, be like, oh, here's where the money is, we can easily get rid of this one. So that being the case, it strikes me that trying to get out good information to the public at an early point is a compelling reason.
Ben.
It's an interesting concept that I didn't take an instant to explain. I agree with the spirit of what this is supposed to accomplish, because I agree. It's important that, you know, the taxpayers in general, the residents, stakeholders, and the voters specifically, have the information they need to make an educated decision.
The process, however, is dictating that, you know, what an educated decision means is, depends on the information available at a given time. We didn't know until Saturday night what the legislature determined that dictated the amount of the cuts that we now have to go into the default budget. You know, we're not necessarily masters of our own calendar. It's important, I think, that we follow along on a process for this, and one of the things why I'm not inclined to support this is that we are having a very public process about the budget, more than, you know, I think any of us have seen for a while, and that's good. And I don't have any feeling at all that every step of the way, as the decisions progress, as the committee and their other members dive into what it means to come up with what these potential additional cuts will mean, what the options are, et cetera, are not going to be put out there in that same public forum, and they should be. And some of those will be decisions, and some will just be indicators, and some will be, here are some of the broad choices we're facing. Through that discussion, I think it behooves us to make sure that we are speaking loudly with the public and clearly to show what those choices are as they're being made, and the ones that we're facing. And at the same time, I really don't feel that we need to rush those decisions. I think these are significant cuts that we're facing. That goes to the core of what we want to accomplish as a district, and will have an equally significant impact on the bottom-line goals and values that the community has spoken and helped us design for education in Burlington. I don't feel that we need to rush and have three meetings in a row to quickly come to something so that we can go, if you don't vote for this budget, here's what you're facing. I think we can have that conversation as we go and be, I guess, work harder at making clear what those choices may or may not be. But I'm not comfortable with just putting that only in finance committee. There's some meetings I can attend, some I can't, but as a board member, I still want to have, you know, a say in that. I'm just not comfortable with how this accomplishes what is proposed, but I understand the spirit of it.
I guess I would just quickly say that, first off, I don't think that saying we had to make a decision by Wednesday night was ever on the table for this idea of the finance committee. So that sort of timing was never kind of the intent, although there is a need. I think that if we don't end up supporting this, I guess, I would just say to the board that we need to remember, there needs to be a board commitment, and I've heard it from some people, but not necessarily from everybody, that we will be putting energy in here. I would also say that I think it would be good that we, well, if we don't come to a decision very quickly, we are doing, I think, what Ben said, which is explaining to the community, this is the depth that we're going to be seeing cuts at the default level. Even if we can't say exactly what they are, we will say, these are the items we are discussing, and it's going to be clear that, you know, if we have seven things we're talking about, four of those seven, or five of those seven are definitely going to be involved, and we can make, you know, be clear about that with the committee. So I guess it's the commitment of the board, you know, explaining the level of what's going to go on. And the other thing I would remind the board, too, is, we do a lot, while this is a very important piece, and we do do a lot of things, you know, we have a curriculum committee, we have a diversity and equity committee, there's a lot of other work of the board that gets done at different places. So, you know, I kind of remind people that we have the other obligations as well. So if people feel like this has to be a board decision, I'm just stressing that we all make sure that we know the commitment, and are reminded that, you know, every committee also does a certain amount of work as well, that not every board member will necessarily weigh in on immediately.
So I agree that these are unusual circumstances, and this is an unusual proposal for unusual times. So I am sympathetic to the fact that we've also seen a lot of, and contemplated, a lot of the cuts that could come in addition to what we've already tackled. But I feel like the public hearing process is what everybody waits for to weigh in, and the finance committee doesn't lend itself well to the public hearing process, because people show up, and the public forum is held before the discussion, and then they show up the next time, and the public forum is held before the discussion, and then the finance committee will make its decision after the public hearing is closed. And I just agree that that really rips off the public, and I think it shortchanges us, because up until the last committee meeting, we were hearing, we were getting new information from district employees about the budget and the impacts of the budget, and that had an impact on our final decisions. And so I would really hate to miss that opportunity again. So I like the schedule that Miriam proposed, and I think that's very doable, and it requires the same commitment that we would all need to make if we went with the alternative, because there's no telling that the cuts would happen in two finance committee meetings. It's more likely there would be a third one anyway. So I would not support this motion.
I'll give you a thought experiment than anything else, but I'm wondering if there might be some common ground here that gets after everything, that if we, as a board, make a commitment to 48 hours after the finance committee has proposed a default budget, that we warrant 48 hours later for as many people to come and have that discussion so at least everyone can be at the table and have a vote on that. Not moving that as a friendly amendment, but more as a discussion to see if that's something that might be a possibility.
Brian.
I feel like we've been having special meetings left and right anyway, so, I mean, if we're going to have, you know, we're having, we're having to meet all the time to deal with stuff, like, I, you know, I'm certainly willing to do my best to be here in 48 hours if need be.
I wasn't sure, starting that, you're going to be in favor against.
No, no, no. When I signed up for this job, I knew it wasn't going to be easy. I feel like, you know, this is a rough time, and we have to kind of stand up and do what's necessary. So granted, I might be, you know, some of us might be out of town, or might miss it with too short notice, but I'm willing to commit to come if possible within 48 hours to a meeting to approve the budget.
Liz.
Well, I'm just concerned about getting data from the staff. And with that quick turnaround, I'm just really concerned that we're asking the staff to do something that's not.
So I guess, what I was considering was that, instead of saying, you know, that the finance committee has, this is our default budget, whenever the finance committee has that default budget, and then the full budget, the full board could commit 48 hours after the finance committee has what they would otherwise say go public with to come in.
Sure.
Personally, I think that this is a little bit more of an intellectual discussion than it is a practical discussion, because I think that there will be a lot of consensus on the board with the decision that the finance committee ends up making. It's the precedent that I'm more concerned about.
Charlie.
Could someone call questions?
You can.
I'd like to call the questions.
Could I have the motion, second? Alan, seconded by Keith.
I'm sorry, no, actually, because Meredith wasn't here when we started, so.
Yeah, no one ever sent me the motion.
You weren't meant, everybody who was here when it started. You got it now.
I'm going to go ahead and read the motion. I move that the school board vest the decision-making authority for a default budget to the finance committee, so the voters of Burlington can fully understand the option of voting no on the proposed school budget of $67.4 million. Question has been called, we have to.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds. All in favor of calling the question?
It's voting right now.
No, you're not voting, you're just voting to end discussion.
Voting to end the discussion.
You're voting to end discussion. Okay. One, two, three. Okay, that's two-thirds. All opposed? Okay. So, all in favor of the motion? Do we need to read it again? Do we have it? Okay.
We have it.
Okay, all in favor of the motion as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Let's have a show of hands, please, Miriam. All opposed? Motion does not pass.
Did we capture Henry's vote?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's, all in favor again, I had four in favor, and opposed were one, two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine opposed, and the student, and Henry, opposed this one. All right. That's it. I would suggest, and not as a motion, I would suggest that the board do commit to coming back extremely quickly after the finance committee has a final proposed default budget, and do our best, and I know we all have busy schedules, especially in May, but do our best to get here at time and manner.
And I will warn a finance committee meeting for Thursday night, because I'm going to start at 8:00, though, because I know we have other commitments that we've made.
Can you speak up? I'm sorry.
Just so you know, I'm not able to. Sorry. Will you have time on Thursday if there are a few things that we need?
I'll do the best I can, absolutely. I'll rearrange things to do the best I can.
Okay. All right, so that will be the plan.
Yeah, dear.
Where? Where?
Probably Ira Allen.
Okay.
Yeah, but it depends what's available, but I will let you know tomorrow.
Nothing else on finance? All right. Commissioner Truman, you have three policy advocacy.
Yes. Policy committee has not yet met. Our first meeting is going to be on the 20th. A reminder that there is a change in the time, normally scheduled for 5:00 PM, policy will be meeting at 7:00 PM to accommodate diversity and equity meeting earlier. There are three policies up for second reading that predate the formation of the committee. So I'm going to, I guess I'll take them one at a time. I'll move second reading of policy G2R, substitutes professional staff, and ask Superintendent Collins to speak to them.
Do you have a second?
Commissioner Jenkins.
Which one was that? G2R. Okay, this is the second reading for this policy, and we are accepting the Vermont School Board Association policy. There was a question back in February, and whether or not we could accept GEDs to accommodate our diverse population, and the answer is no, we cannot. By statute, by Vermont statute, a high school diploma is required. So this basically is a policy that replaces our current one, using the Vermont School Board Model Policy language, for second reading.
Any discussion? All in favor of second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Ben.
I'll move second reading on policy JICFA, and policy on hazing prevention.
Seconded by Commissioner Kirk.
We had, we're using our policy, again, this is a second reading, but we're using our policy with updated citations. I'm sorry, we're actually using the state policy with updated citations, and our policy largely becomes procedure.
Any questions, comment? All in favor of policy JICFA, second reading, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Truman.
Move second reading of policy JQ, pupil privacy rights and student surveys.
Second, second. Commissioner Kirk.
And this is, yeah, this is just a very straightforward policy, using the Vermont School Board Association Model Policy, replacing ours. Ours will become procedures.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who was second?
Seconded by Commissioner Kirk.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dotson.
It's more of a practical, I guess. I mean, is this basically the policy slash procedure that we're using with the student survey that is going on now for?
Yes. We're in compliance.
Yeah.
I just have a question. Jeanie, when you say ours will become procedures, what does that mean?
The policy committee has been trying, has been looking at what's required by the Vermont School Board Association, and looking at their suggested policies and our policies. In some cases, this is one, they use the school board procedure policy becau, I'm sorry, the school board policy, in some cases, because our policy actually appears to be more of a procedure than a policy, and trying to separate those two things out.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Anything further?
Did you want to?
No, I have the planning committee. So planning committee, I just want to real quickly say that the planning committee met will be meeting again on the 3rd of June, the evening of the 3rd of June, the night of our vote, after we've all voted, of course. And the main work that we're going to have in addition to planning the June 10th meeting would be to be finalizing ideas around the June 10th board retreat, I'm sorry, the June 5th board retreat. And I just want everyone to be thinking about work plans within their committee, and what work you see as being essential work. I think that the ITC has set a nice model for everyone to be following. They've identified three or four now, kind of essential tasks, I think it's ambitious, but achievable tasks that they really want to focus their attention on over the course of the, over the course of the next year. And I think it's a good model for the other committees to be thinking about for a work plan that's really going to guide the work of each committee. So as you guys meet over the course of the, between now and the 3rd of June, I would encourage all of the committees to have those discussions, and try to get some clarity on what sort of work plan you think is the essential work of your specific committee. Commissioner Truman.
At this time, I would request a motion to amend our agenda to include consideration of a separation and settlement agreement.
Do you have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Dotson. All in favor of amending the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Commissioner Truman.
I move to approve the separation and settlement agreement on behalf of the Burlington School Board, and to authorize its execution on behalf of the board by the chair.
Second, Commissioner Dotson. I'd like to take just a second to make.
I'd like to take just a second to make, before we go into discussion on this, I'd like to take just a second to make a few comments. First of all, obviously, we're treading into very personal issues, and I want to make sure that any discussion that does take place here remains civil, and that we're talking about the positions and what's good for the schools, not the personalities, or having any discussion turned personal. This agenda item relates to the proposed agreement between Superintendent Collins and the board pursuant to this agreement. Ms. Collins will continue as our superintendent of schools until June 30th of 2014, and then resign from her position. For a number of reasons, including the fact that Ms. Collins is currently under contract to the board to serve as superintendent of June, until June 30th, 2016, the conversations that resulted in this agreement were most intricate and delicate. The full board established its parameters for these conversations, and then delegated primary responsibility to develop the particulars of an agreement to myself and our legal counsel with active input from two other board members. Negotiations were conducted with Ms. Collins and her legal counsel. We have taken this responsibility very seriously. We believe that we have negotiated an agreement that complies with the parameters the board established. This agreement will, of course, be a matter of public record now that it is under formal consideration. One of the agreements, elements of this agreement is there be a joint public statement made by Ms. Collins and the board. The contents of this joint public statement have been most carefully developed and form an essential part of the overall statement. It would represent bad faith for the board not to honor this component of the agreement if the pending motion is adopted. Consequently, I believe it's my responsibility as chair to caution the board that any departure from the joint statement could put the agreement itself at risk of failure. Please keep this firmly in mind as we formally consider the motion to approve the agreement. In my opinion as chair, it would be to the greatest disadvantage of all concerned if this agreement were to unravel at the last minute because of any commentary contrary to the joint statement made by board members. Ask you all, please guide yourself accordingly. With that, there has been a motion. There has been a second for that motion, and following procedure, if there is anyone who would like to make, we open the motion up for discussion.
I would only ask, the agreement, is it a, is it a public document? I mean, we have seen it.
Yes.
And will it be put up or released, or I have exactly what would happen if this passes?
If it passes, it would be, it would be released tomorrow.
Okay.
I have shared this around with the board through this afternoon, the final wording and final agreement, and I know that not everyone has necessarily had a chance to take a look, but it has been, has been shared with everyone, I believe. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve the separation and settlement agreement on behalf of the Burlington School Board, and its execution by myself, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? The agreement passes unanimously.
I just want to clarify, I'm abstaining. I don't go either way. I'm not, I wasn't part of any of the meetings. I have not seen the agreement, so it would not be my place to weigh in on this.
Thank you very much, I understand. At this time, we'd like to consider an executive session for the purpose of discussion of personnel matter, and for the, a second executive session for the purpose of discussion negotiations where premature disclosure could place the school district at a substantial disadvantage. Any motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Commissioner Mattson, seconded by Commissioner Curry. All in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We'll go into executive session.